Good evening, and I would like to call to order the Village of Webster Board Meeting for February 24th, 2022. Would you stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance? And you, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may proceed. Our first order on the agenda tonight is a floor open for public forum. Anybody wishing to comment or to address the Board may do so. Good evening. Richard Walter, 20 Elm Street.
I'm just here to repeat what I said at the last meeting. Tonight you have up for vote the head credit for volunteer firemen and other emergency workers, first responders. I very much would like to see that go through because I feel that the current members and all members in the past, they have been doing their duty for the last 20 years, are entitled for this benefit and should be entitled for this benefit. Volunteer firemen are working out there for free, dedicating their time to the village residents. And for this reason, I think they should be compensated in some way, and a small tax break would be a very nice compensation for these guys putting in their free time to help out their fellow village residents. Thank you.
We have unscheduled a public hearing, but it is scheduled for 7:10, and we have that timeframe at the moment, so we will move to Board business this time if there's anyone else who would like to address the Board. Close that portion of the meeting. Our first on the scheduled agenda is a resolution to approve the minutes from the February 10th Board Meeting. I have, if at all, I have no comment on it. It seems an order to myself.
Nor do I.
I would like to make a motion to approve it.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
You know, I think before we go on, it was to my error, I believe that I would like to stop the proceedings for a moment before we move on. In light of the actions that have taken place today, it's something that kind of hits home to our community here in Webster, the invasion of Russia into the Ukraine. We have a sister city, Dinipro, representatives from there visited here a year ago, and I think that at this time it would be appropriate for us to take a moment of silence and thoughts and prayers going out to the Ukraine and the people there. So if you would please with me a moment of silence. I thank you for that, and again, our prayers were out to the people who are there, and now we will move on. Next on our order of business tonight, we have a motion to approve the claims and warrants. I had a chance to go through them, and I have basically just a couple of questions that I would ask. First, Jake, the item map of auto parts, it would be on page two, eight times 75 hose, what does that refer to? Ontario of the auto parts and the hose that's produced.
Number one, okay. The very bottom.
Map of auto parts?
Oh, that's a hose reel for the garage, for an air hose. It's a 75, yeah, it's a 75 foot reel, a wind-up reel that goes on the wall. So, yeah, we have a 50 footer, and this is gonna, we had kind of used up, so this is gonna replace that and get a larger one at the same time.
Okay. Thank you.
Does it include the hose?
Yes.
I was gonna say, almost $400 for a wheel.
Yeah, it's a little steep.
Yeah, it's inflation. It seems steep even with the hose.
The other comment or other question that I had was in, this would be under sewer, and it would be on the front of, it's page one. Fourth item down, it would be McAllister signs, the laminated Village of Webster logo. I believe that that was two laminated 15-inch circular signs, and I just wondered what they were ordered for.
W-17 was replaced with a smaller gum truck down there, and this was for marketing to the side of the truck to the end of doors, to say regular doors, Webster logo.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all personally I had.
Looks good.
Anybody else have a comment? If not, I will undertake a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion. Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution to authorize the village clerk to accept the proposal to migrate IT functions, including email, Microsoft Office 365, and all office housed servers to the LMT Cloud and sign to continue professional service agreement with LMT. I believe that this is the fourth time or so that this has come up. However, we asked last time that it could be a little bit clearer in terms of what was presented, and I think that they've done that. The LMT quotes, you can see that in terms of what we currently are experiencing, the monthly payments would ultimately, in terms of monthly payments, it would be a little bit more, but ultimately for the year, because of the fact that we would not have monthly fees in three of those areas and not needed for the cloud and two more, the yearly monthly fees turns out to be about $2,000 or less. So I think that they've made this much clearer if it's not just. So this resolution is before the Board to authorize the village clerk to accept this
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
At this particular point, I believe that it is now 7:10, so we will move to the public hearing. This is a public hearing on the proposed Local Law Number Four of 2022, which is entitled, quote, "A Local Law to Amend and Clarify Chapter 85 of the Code of the Village of Webster", The, maybe we had talked about this last time, but there would be, the purpose here is to amend and clarify Chapter 85 in the Code of the Village by amendments and additions to several sections of the chapter. One in Section 8511, Section A and B amended to provide that during the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., no person shall operate or cause to permit or permit to be operated any device which produces a sound level across a residential real property or within any residential zone district in excess of 65 dBAs of an L10 in excess of 50 dBAs.
What's L10?
What is L10?
Yes, you asked the same thing two weeks ago. If you'll never read it. Yes, I did. I read it. It's in the code, and I read the definition, and if you read the definition, it doesn't help because it's, you gotta be an audiologist or something to understand what the heck it means. So do you want me to read it to you? Do you want me to read it to you again?
So striking.
I did. We're basically looking at the excess of 65 dBAs. And then during the hours from 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., that would be overnight, no person shall operate or cause to be permitted or permit to be operated any device which would produce a sound level in excess of, across a residential real property boundary or within residential zone district in excess of 55 dBAs, or using the L10 in excess of 50.
Like in case you get cat meows or something, you're very good at noise, huh? You might. It's awful loud. Do you want me to read you the L10 again there, Carol? It's the A-weighted sound level measured with slow response that exceeds 10% of the time in any one-hour interval. The measurement time interval need not be one hour, provided that the measurement results are representative of a one-hour interval. Now, that certainly clarified there. Yeah, it did. Thank you.
That's why we're asking.
It has to be long for the company. It would have to be somewhat continuous. Yeah, it has to be. So I suppose, I suppose it also needs a definition within the definition of what is an A-weighted sound level?
There you go.
Is that like music, which you generally tune to the note A?
No, there's different scales of decibels. There's an A scale and a C scale. There's also a B scale that's very rarely used, but the C scale is one, but the A scale is what this one is based upon, and it talks about.
Oh, thanks, Jake.
There is. I looked it up because I didn't know either.
It makes it all crystal clear. Yeah, it certainly does. I don't know how, if somebody complains something's too noisy, how anyone that is employed by the village actually goes and figures out if in fact you're violating this. There is a noise. There is a noise. I have, yeah, I have two different sound meters. Yeah, sound meter. Yeah, F, pardon, sorry for the call. Yeah. But, but. A, B, or C.
Yeah.
Yes, but is it, it's just not in excess of 65 decibels, it's in excess of 65 decibels of an L10 in excess of 50 decibels. What does that mean?
So basically, I think appears a sound level for an hour-long period that's, that's 65 decibels for six minutes, and then it's below 65 decibels to the west, rest of the time you would weigh it out and say you were at, 10% of that time you were at 65 decibels, so you didn't exceed that. If it was 70 decibels for six minutes, and it was nothing before or nothing after that, then you would say you exceeded the 10% of the L10, and now you're violating that.
I feel sorry for Eric. I feel sorry for anyone that's got a treadmill. It seems to me there's gotta be a more common sense noise or events out there somewhere than whoever came up with.
For the record, this isn't the only code that is, doesn't make sense.
Oh, in the village, in this village's code?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I'm not gonna argue that. It's, it's true. This just seems to me there should be an easier way to figure out if something's too noisy or not.
I figure the meter has to be calibrated to.
Yeah. But calibrated to A's L's.
I think the second part of that, 8512B, is a little bit better because it talks about continuous sound in the air which has crossed property. So that would be, I think, a little bit more relevant that you would use as you're looking at a continuous sound over a period of time as opposed to taking an hour of your time and looking at how well.
So if I'm gonna run a chainsaw, do I have to get a permit from you, Aaron?
Just stop every 10 minutes. Yeah. Just don't run it for an hour straight.
I'll get a new muffler for my chainsaw.
Those new electric ones aren't as loud. Nor is the rock.
So we're talking about some sound levels there. Number three, 85, Section 8514 is amended to be replaced by the replacement of the beginning of the first sentence, the section with the following quote, "The provisions of this chapter shall not apply to the noise produced by the following uses", unquote. And number four, Section 8514 shall be further amended by the addition of subsection E as follows, quote, "E, the admission of sound in the performance of municipal operations such as snow and ice removal and street sweeping." So those things which tend to happen overnight, I suppose, are looking here at the exceptions. And number five, this local law shall become effective upon filing with the Secretary of State. The gist of the proposed local law, and at this particular point, I would open the floor up for any comments regarding this local law.
There's a, an occasional loud sound that comes from the building at Salt Road that I and my neighbors have heard at night from time to time. I research it, and it's pretty loud, I mean, if your window's open. It's the one on Salt Road, and that's been addressed before. I think it's 243.
Oh, the toner building?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's a big fan there. I research it out, and, yeah, it's a big fan that makes a lot of noise. So that's a continuous noise for a long period of time, and, you know, creepy, your L10 ain't neither down there. My fellow go out to Xerox and watch.
Maybe outside jurisdiction.
Yeah, it probably is. But still, it doesn't matter, we can hear it from our.
It is within the town or the village, though. The Xerox is within the village.
The toner building's in the village.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
You've heard that noise then, Aaron, right?
Yeah, I actually know what you're talking about. Yeah, I've done research.
And as I say, you think that's above the B level.
If anybody's ever crossed a property lines and stuff like that, I doubt it. But I haven't sat there three or four minutes with the echoes either.
Yeah. I can hear the echoes across.
They're gonna train from.
Okay.
All right, well, anybody else have a comment regarding that? If not, I will close the public hearing on that, and we'll come back to that next week. See if there's any, or two weeks from now, we'll see if there's any more comments that come into the village regarding that, and we can vote on that next time. So the public hearing is now closed at 7:20, and we will now move on to our next order of business. Number four, we have a resolution for, a secret resolution on proposed Local Law Number Two of 2022, entitled, quote, "A Local Law to Extend the Benefits of the Cold War Veterans' Exemption to Qualified Owners of Taxable Real Property Within the Village of Webster", This, the secret on the proposed law is resolved, therefore, to be, not to be in action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and as such is precluded from the environmental review under the environmental conservation law. Essentially, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, which is secret. An action has to affect the environment, and certainly having property tax exemptions has nothing to do with the environment, it's simply something the assessor does in a computer or whatever, so it's not an action, so it's not even covered by a secret. So what we have here is not in action. Do I have a motion for this proposed resolution that the local law is not in action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have a resolution to adopt the proposed Local Law Number Two of 2022, entitled, "A Local Law to Extend the Benefits of the Cold War Veterans' Exemption to Qualified Owners of Taxable Real Property Within the Village of Webster." This was a matter of public discussion, hard discussion at the last Board meeting. There has been no adverse comments regarding it, so I would, if anybody would like me to take a look at this in terms of reading it through, if you haven't already, I will do so, but if you have, I would ask for a resolution, a motion to accept this proposed local law.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And next, this we have, item number six, a secret, "Resolution of the Village of Webster Board of Trustees Concerning the Adoption of the Local Law Number Three of 2022, entitled, quote, "A Local Law to Extend the Benefits of the Volunteer Firefighters and Volunteer Ambulance Workers' Exemption to Qualified Owners of Taxable Real Property Within the Village of Webster", unquote. Again, this is a resolution regarding the secret, but therefore be it resolved that the proposed local law is not in action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. It's otherwise precluded from environmental review under the environmental conservation law. I have a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Therefore, we do have before the Board a resolution to adopt proposed Local Law Number Three of 2022, which is entitled, quote, "A Local Law to Extend the Benefits of the Volunteer Firefighters and Volunteer Ambulance Workers' Exemption to Qualified Owners of Taxable Real Property Within the Village of Webster." I do note in here that, again, we have been through this, but I would mention that this exemption refers to firefighters and also volunteer ambulance service members who have been involved and enrolled for minimum of 20 years after that particular, after that particular time.
No, it's actually, if you're an active member for at least twenty, no, two years, you're entitled to the exemption. Once you get 20 years in, it's a lifetime exemption, so even if you retire from the active ambulance or fire volunteer firefighter service, you still keep the exemption. Whereas like somebody, if you're a volunteer fireman for five years, once you stop, you don't get the exemption anymore. That's why there's an annual requirement that you get a certificate from whatever the volunteer fire company or ambulance company is, and you gotta give that to the certifying that you're an active member. You gotta give that each year to the town assessing office.
So after two years, one then is eligible for 10% of village debt, top of village debt. And one must continue each year for the next 18 to get a certificate in order to, at that particular point, after 20 years total, be eligible for the lifetime exemption.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and, you know, I think you could have somebody that's got 18 years of active service today, and they do it for two more years, now they got their 20 years, so it's not, it's not 20 years starting in 2022.
No, right. I'm just saying it's 18 years after their first two years. So in other words, total of 20.
Well, all right.
But you begin to, you can get that 10% after your first two years of active duty.
Yes.
And that would continue, let's say they're here for the next 10 years, and they would get that if they're applying every year for the next 10 years, but after that time, which would be a total of two plus 10 is 12 years, they were to leave or to become inactive, as we have heard, the speaker previously was no longer active. So they would be not eligible.
Right. Okay. Right. Regrettably, this isn't retroactive, you know, so it doesn't, you can't say, well, I had 20 years in, you know, but it stopped five years ago, therefore I should still get it. It doesn't work that way.
Correct. I'm sorry. From 20. Right, well, this is.
I don't see what happened to this.
Sorry.
Yours isn't on either.
I turned it off because I, if too many are on, I was afraid that was the point of the sound, but mine and your mic, I don't know.
Any, any further comments? If not, I would ask for a motion to approve this Local Law Number Three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Trustee Balke?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byrnes?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to authorize the village treasurer to sign the engagement letter with Mengele Metzger Bar and Company. I will appeal for the first. letter with Mendel Metzger Barr and Company, LLP, for the deferred compensation plan for the two thousand twenty-one calendar year. We were through this last time. I believe that the cost, we estimate the fee for this to be three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the deferred compensation plan. Asking for a motion to approve this authorization.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye. And next, we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter with Mendel Metzger Barr and Company, LLP, to perform the Village of Webster audit of financial statements for the fiscal year ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Regarding this, I believe if you look at the third to last page, there is a regular audit cost of fifteen thousand five hundred, annual financial report update document of eighteen hundred, and a total of seventeen thousand three hundred. An additional charge for coming to the meeting if requested to present to us is two hundred and seventy-five, and there also is a fee of one thousand dollars, cost to complete the work, which is the preparation of depreciation schedules for the Village of Webster for the year ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, which I believe our village treasurer has said that this would be probably the only year in which that would take place, if she wishes to do that, take that upon herself in the future. So this is, this is a resolution for our new auditors as we no longer have Freed Maxick. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to set, a resolution to set a public hearing to consider proposed local law number five, quote, "To amend the solid waste chapter of the Code of the Village of Webster." This would be for Thursday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two at seven oh five. This will be designed as a, designated as proposed local law number five of two thousand twenty-two, entitled, "The Law to Clarify and Amend the Code of Webster as it relates to the Question of Refuse." Did you circulate the actual local law to the trustees? So the actual local law is not in effect?
Wait, wait, from which side? I'm trying to fix the mic. Oh, I just put the public hearing on there.
So you need to email everybody the actual local law.
Yeah, okay, sorry about that.
Not the resolutions, but there's one that's just the local law.
Okay, I think I'll get it if you want to.
Well, no, but there's a requirement that it has to sit on the legislator's desk for seven days before they can adopt it. So they don't have, you have to seven days and start to run it.
Okay, sorry about that, I just dropped that one.
You can do it by email, though, it doesn't actually, actually have to be by email.
Sorry about that.
Perhaps Jake could summarize what the amended local law is.
Or I can just email it.
Now, this is about collection of lucky. You have a synopsis according to what it would be, Jake?
He wrote it, so.
Yeah, it's. Basically, there's a few things that we're looking to clarify in there. One of them is regards to brush pickup. We amended a section of that to clarify in the size of brush and what you can put out. And brush, we have a brush chip, and I pointed out when we were going back and forth on it, that brush is basically small woody things, but they're not trees. But what we mean by brush is limbs, that's what it's commonly called, people call up and ask about brush pickups, and we maintain that verbiage in the code. We also made some amendments to ball pey items. There's opportunities now for people that ball pey items, furniture mattresses pickup, and they were kind of a constant, a constant issue, so they can get those picked up relatively inexpensively, cheaper than the cost of the village to be able to do that at a low frequency that we have. But we'll continue to pick up appliances that don't contain refrigerators, so we made that change. Also, the containers and placement of containers, especially in a business district, where you could put a container in relationship to the sidewalk and walking path to keep it clear for pedestrians and snow clearing.
I'm trying to think of my containers. They go out to the curb, and when they got, then when they gotta be brought back in from the curb, that was really the main impetus for amending it in the first place, because there was nothing in there. You know, if you have your garbage can sitting out at the road all the time, you might avoid the existing code.
In one of the issues.
And then we updated it because it didn't, it actually prohibits using the ninety-six gallon toders that everybody has now, so we needed to clarify that, there was something allowed. Pretty much, yeah.
All those things have been seen over there.
The funny part, when we did it in the last one, too, when we started looking at different codes, we started to look at one of them, you're reading through it with more critical eye, and you realize, oh, I were changing, we ought to update this, we should correct this, we should find it. You know, so we did it with the last couple, and it always happens, we intend to go through and make a couple simple changes and adjourn them more.
Well, that's okay.
It makes you have more.
I think it was written in like nineteen eighty-one or something, and nobody used, toders didn't exist back then, you know, the big things, everybody had a garbage can. That's what it talked about. In fact, you couldn't wheel anything to the curb, it had to be carryable, is how it currently But we told Aaron, don't go enforcing that right now, so he could actually cite everybody in the village, when he sees them reading their toter to the curb with their.
Yeah, security.
They're actually filing the village's local law.
And if it had a noisy wheel, it might be violating it, too. If you want to get out there before the garbage man, it might be, maybe only fifty, doesn't it?
So this is one that really needed to be relooked at.
So we have a motion to establish a public hearing, and this, I believe, we mentioned, would be Thursday, March tenth at seven oh five, or as close to that time as possible. Motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsey?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, you have in front of you a budget to actual report provided by Marshall, I believe, as to where we are at this particular time. You have both the general, and I believe you're also giving the sewer. Looks like we are doing quite well, I believe, Marshall, aren't we not? We have what, four months to go?
Yep, we are.
March, April, May.
Yes, we are about seventy percent through the fiscal year, and we've used fifty-six percent of the general budget, and I don't have the sewer in front of me, but I think it's about sixty-eight percent of the sewer budget, so we're right on target.
Good.
Thank you.
Weather begins to break, as we assume into spring, that a number of projects will go into place, but that's very good at this particular point.
Yep, thank you, Marshall.
Yeah.
My pleasure.
At this particular point, I would mention as public notification that our serial bond interest payment, bond issued upon financing of the S T P grid system at fifty-five hundred and ninety thousand, the S T P reconstruction of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, and the water tank work at two hundred and fifty-five thousand, that the interest payment of ten thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents will be made on the fourteenth, Monday, the fourteenth of March. Correct, Marshall?
Fifteenth.
The payment will be made on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so this is.
The related bank transfers within our accounts will happen on the fourteenth.
And I believe that that will leave a total bond balance as of March fifteenth of nine hundred and ten thousand two hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cents. For you who are into counting, there you go. All right, this particular time, Matt, do we have anything from?
No, we don't.
Very quiet there. Law offices. How about in front of us?
Yes, I have just a couple things. So week of March seventh, it hasn't been posted yet officially, but we're looking, Karen, Buck, and I from the town are going to be doing another test kit event, but this time we're going to just be sitting down at town hall with a table, and we'll tell people how many they can take, and it's going to be over like three days. We have like eighteen thousand masks. I checked with Maplewood, and they don't need any, so it's going to be kind of, we're going to figure out how that goes, but this time we're going to do it during the week instead of on the weekend, and just come in if you need them. And then I'll let you know more.
Who's in the test kits?
Yes, I'll let you know more about, I think. Masks will just be for the employees, I think, if they wish to wear them. The town is forced to wear them, we're not, because there's a certain amount of people they have, but, so I'll have more information about that. And then make sure to check your emails, because I emailed out the draft financial statements from Freed Maxick, and so check those out, and Marshall will have more information soon, those are in your emails. And then, March, first thing, the meeting of March tenth, we'd like to do a special proclamation to Bill Baker for his nine years of service, so we'll do a special little ceremony for him, and we'll have a proclamation written, and that's it.
Thank you. I don't like the law, it's passed the mind, but Jake, do you have something for us?
You know, obviously the normal winter request, I guess, and maybe explanation admitted, not many calls, I think most people get it. We did have some calls in regards to the way that we salt, and it was back in the mid-eighties, we started what we call sensible salty model, we take up Monroe County, where we salt hills, curves, and intersections, and we rely on, you know, people slow down in the rest of the road, low, low, low volume, and low speed side streets, basically, and that allows us to, you know, I think I said it before, we averaged, we're average has been going up just a pause, but we, we average probably about three hundred and twenty-five, three hundred and fifty total a year. I remember years ago talking to the folks at the Xerox campus, which is a small portion of the village, and they use over twenty-one hundred. So we do a really good job managing salt. That being said, this year did not help us manage salt, and we might have to ask for a budget, we might say a budget modification for additional, depending on what we get between now and end of the season, but just remind people to, you know, slow down, drive the conditions. Be helpful, then we can continue to use salt wisely and not keep it just going, it never gets treated. Once it melts on the road, it just goes right into the creeks and streams and doesn't go through our plant, so we want to minimize it as much as we can. Sewer, John and I took a field trip today, went down to the Village of Danville's sewer treatment plant, we were looking at a septic drainage station, you know, it's part of the project, and we started to meet on some of the, some of the sewer project items. It was, it was a really neat system that they had, the operator was great, took us for a nice tour, but that's primarily, we went down to see that septic drainage station, and we're excited, we're going to have another, get together with the engineers, quick one tomorrow morning, and we're excited about to talk about that some more, and obviously it's going to be an inside of the building type of setup, and I think that we'd find considerable savings based on what we specked out originally, or what the engineers had specked out originally, and, you know, this, the functionality that I said, I think it was a hundred and ninety-two in their estimates, this machine or this unit is about forty-eight thousand bucks, so, and, you know, based on the volume, we're not sitting there all day long getting septic in or anything like that, and obviously excited to be inside, and this is, there's no moving parts, it's a way simpler, you don't have maintenance, it's just, it's a, it's a nice setup, and it was, it was very interesting, so we're excited about that, and again, the guy at Danville was great. It's nice to go out and talk to other operators, especially with similar sized systems, you know, we were talking about different fires for, you know, polymers and parrot, and, you know, use parrot, these are something else, but different, you know, different ideas, just bouncing off of this, it was nice to get out there and see what somebody else does it, so, but I think that's it. And then I think Aaron's going to talk about the stormwater stuff that you're doing, and it'll send in tomorrow.
So what you were talking about, I just wanted to say, from the museum, they wanted to thank you guys for plowing and everything, so they just really appreciated our efforts.
Yeah, well, we get to do it again tomorrow, it looks like. In the flag, some people, we did, there's some calls about all Japanese flags on Main Street, which were not, obviously, when you look close, it was why I never realized that, yeah, we did. But it was a great, you know, I know the bid was putting on the fall in love with Webster thing, it was pretty neat, unfortunately, it's still going on, the flags didn't survive Saturdays, and the flag poles, many of them didn't survive Saturday's wind, they were pretty, pretty. We did, I think it was the snow melted, we were able to find about five more of them, so, but I don't know where they all are.
I thought then.
Together, we might have, I think there's still.
And the sides lived out, too, at North Avenue and Central Park.
Oh, really, yeah, yeah, it was, so, you know, it's all. Yeah, they were up for a good amount of time, but it's been real nice, we've followed that online and seen everything that's going on, so, well, we've had too much snow to erate and all those other things.
Maybe the rising sun.
Okay, thank you. Aaron?
As you can see, with the, the winter months, it's slowed on a little bit, only a total of five permits issued, six complaints, one certificate of occupancy was issued. Jake finished working on the stormwater management plan, which is this big button right here, want to thank him for his help on that, he's looking forward to fully passing it to me, but I will most definitely still be his brain for all that, all that information at times. I'll make sure you heard that far, I'll do that one. Afraid to stay quiet for the. Trying to stay quiet, but it's different. You know, same thing, we're still working on some of the loan permits. Prettywood subdivision, pretty close to being done, just weather dependent stuff that, you know, they obviously have to wait till spring. Greenbrier Crossing is working on site work. They're also, they have several basements and foundations in right now, so they're moving forward pretty quickly. They're also going to be going to the Z V A this month for phase two. This is ahead of schedule due to the popularity and demand for the housing. They have multiple units sold already, and they're going to be about a year ahead of schedule, just because we've got so many units sold already.
Wow.
You know, so that's kind of the country manner. They're also working diligently on fixing up their violations. A lot of their stuff is also weather dependent, so, you know, they're waiting for the warmer weather. Citizens Bank is moving right along with their remodel. They should be hopefully opening up within the next several weeks.
Okay, then I was wondering, a couple of people were asking me, and I couldn't really tell them when it's going to be finished.
Yeah, they're hoping within the next three, two to three weeks.
On March.
Yeah, they're moving diligently, working diligently on that. Connected Bank is also going to be closing, I think I reported that before, for a full remodel in addition, kind of what, you know, Citizens Bank has done. And Jake and I will be gone from March fourteenth through the sixteenth for our annual state training for the Inspector Code portion and stuff, because that came out of it. So we'll be gone mostly, mostly for that. So I think that's it. Any questions?
Who's in charge?
What's that?
Who's in charge?
Done.
That's the manner. How are they doing?
They're...
Probably a lot of basement stuff at this point can't be done.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, a lot of it's weather dependent. The foundation issue, they can't get done. They're doing inside stuff, but, you know, it's slow moving because they have to issue... They have to have the people vacate their permits. They actually noticed this. So it's going a little bit slower than what they wanted. I have been getting a lot of complaints because they are going to be raising rents there. So I've had a lot of calls about that, you know, obviously, we don't have a say in any of that. So, yeah. But, yeah, they've been working diligently. Even just a few weeks ago, when we had a break in the weather and got it up to what, fifty, they, you know, got their new pool cover in and had, you know, had somebody come and sell that, versus just hurts.
I know, but it's too bad it had to get to that point.
Yeah, yeah, but the new owners have so far stuck to their words, and they're, they're well.
That's good news.
Yeah.
That is good news.
Could it continue?
The permits are, well, most of them closed, especially the ones that were over the permits or...
The new ones, like the five that were just issued, a lot of them were for the Greenbrier, Citizens Bank, you know, remodels.
Oh, okay, so not residential, at this point.
Yeah, no, not a ton, minor residential, structural, you know, stuff like that is going on.
I wondered.
Yeah. There actually is, real quick, a couple developments, other developments coming in that we're working on down at Donovan Street?
Yeah.
That's going to the Z V A, yeah. There's going to be four parcels getting merged into one. That's going to the Z V A as well this month. I did forget to put that in the report, sorry. So you'll see that coming down the line, too.
Donovan Street?
What's that?
Donovan Street?
Yeah. I think it's really the last empty blocks we have in the village, yes.
Yeah, the other side of the walking, you know.
Yeah.
Should, you know, Joe?
Yeah, yeah.
I just got a question. We was talking about that, and I'm looking at this next poll, and I think Joey brought it up maybe earlier. I know we still have to review the code, Aaron and I, for the provisions, changing provisions of the zoning in regards to site plan review, controlled site use, how it is now. I know, you know, one project on Orchard Street, especially this one coming in on the twenty-second, and you talked about other ones coming in as well. Does that have to, should the village board be involved in that meeting as well, or somehow scheduled to do the site plan review? I don't know, because I don't think there's...
Most of those are in the industrial zone?
Well, why don't we get, can't we get the local law? Oh, no, once Greenbrier, yeah, sorry. Once Greenbrier.
Greenbrier is covered under the existing one, but these, whatever's being built on these four lots on Donovan Street?
So that only applies to the ones in the industrial zone?
Well, the way the code is written currently, there is no site plan review for anything in the industrial zone, which is probably why in Xerox there are sewer lines built underneath the buildings, because technically, they didn't have to come in here for anything other than a building per... But, so, the Donovan Street one, I would prefer that that be held off until we get the new, I drafted the lot, I was waiting for you two to guys to give me some comments, and it's been like, you know, it's been a little while. The only real things, the only real thing I'd need to know is, you know, we talked about this, Jake, was I tapped down the stuff in there about gas stations, service stations that are real old, and I'm not sure they even need that anymore. That's really all I needed your input on, and just what you thought about that.
But, yeah, we'll get, I know we could get that to the show, but, yeah, we'll get that.
Because then we could get it to this part. The rest of it is pretty much modeled on the site plan review, local law in the village of Fairport. And I figured, in Fairport, the village of Fairport looks pretty good, so they must have a good, you know, pretty good site plan and review, or it is. And I would just throw out this controlled site permit, which I've never heard of done anywhere other than the village of Webster, an animal called a controlled site permit, because when you had a planning board, they still called it site plan review, even though technically it wasn't site plan review, it was controlled site use review. So, and it's kind of strange, like, you would think you would want to control uses in an industrial zone more than any other zone, but that was the one that was excluded. So it's just a little, another additio to the monster local laws.
I just want to clear up the comprehensive.
Well, the village should undertake a, the town, a comprehensive plan. It's long, long past time to do that.
Yeah, Orchard Street's busy right now, Forest Street, Donovan, you know, there's a lot of, actually, a lot of projects going on right now down there. The new business is coming into, you know, that farmer, well, that was there, and Milworth, you know, project, plus the old, the old antique center was, one fifty Orchard, has stopped working right now, but...
Well, that's the area that Matt Chatfield supplied for planning grant for. So we're going to be approving all these new things, and without the benefit of having all this planning, and there won't be any land left to plan for after all these other things get done.
Most buildings are torn down and reworked.
And there's a lot of there that's probably...
Yeah. Yeah, you know, along with, back to the MS four stormwater stuff, there's going to be a lot of training that's going to be needed on my part, so that's going to be coming down the schedule, because this, Jake will tell you, this is a lot. So like you said, I'll reiterate, all I can add to it today, I appreciate it is how it went down. And you guys do all, I think everybody has a report from that, that the mayor did have to sign that to be sent in for tomorrow, so, so, yeah.
Then I would announce that we have meetings coming up. We have village board workshop on March eighth, excuse me, at six o'clock. We have a village board meeting on March tenth at seven. We'll have another village board workshop, primarily budget workshops, on March fifteenth at six. And then again, our village board meeting on March twenty-fourth. Time, so those are meetings that will be forthcoming, and we'll be getting busy this month working on our budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-two and twenty-three. So anything else that anybody has for, for the order?
Nothing, I was just happy that our budgeting was going so well. Thank you.
And thank you for the office staff for joining us this evening. It's very nice to have you here, although I'm not sure you like being here at eight o'clock at night, but we enjoyed having you. Thank you for coming.
I came, I came armed for the L M T stuff.
I know it was written correctly.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll step in.
All right, it is now eight oh one, so all in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. Thank you for this evening, for coming, for watching, and we'll see you March eighth at six o'clock.